Well, I looked first at 127 pages, oh my God. Then I noticed that half of it is dacked and they pull down.
Half is all language.
Yeah, that they pull out.
Yeah.
But you have to look at everything and find out what's pulled out and what's not.
Really? If you would, please join us for the pledge of allegiance and invocation.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for this day and our many blessings. We thank you for returning us here. We ask now as we conduct your business, Lord, that we do it in a manner that's pleasing to you and in a manner that is in the best interest of our citizens, Lord, and we ask these things from Jesus.
Amen. And we'll go ahead and open the meeting and just a quick reminder, if you haven't already done so, um, please silence your phones or turn them off. We can minimize interruptions. And staff, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, what we have before you tonight are some legislative items and then some additional business to brief you on the US 331 corridor project. Um, but the first item of business tonight is the continuation of part three of our comprehensive plan, uh, a series of public hearings. Um, tonight we're considering, uh, proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan, uh, infrastructure element and actually the solid waste sub-element. And now let... Kristen can introduce those for us.
We can go ahead and do, um, we do, we did, we did advertise two comprehensive plan elements tonight. We advertised, um, the, uh, solid waste sub-element of the infrastructure element. You have that, uh, ready to go and we are going to ask you to table transportation element. Uh, we're just not ready, uh, to, to do that. We need some maps and some staff, but we'll get there.
Okay. Well, you want to go ahead and...
Yeah, the, uh, if you, if you, um, there, there's really not much in the, um, solid waste sub-element, just cleaning up. Um, we removed some outdated references to a, um, master plan requirement and caught it up with some state law. Um, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain it. Those, there's, there's really not a lot substantive there.
Commissioners, do y'all have any questions on that part?
A lot of this has to do with recycling programs and all of that. Fair statement?
Yes, it does, um, mention recycling programs and the, the main change there was the removal of the waste stream, the 30 percent. Um, there was a change in state law. That's no longer required for county our size. So having it in here, we, we don't want to have things in here that, you know, were not achievable or, or doable. So, uh, that's really the only change. It still, you know, says that we're interested in doing recycling and that we will continue to do that as we can. So it's not, we're not in any way removing it.
It's all pretty simple, really.
Yes, uh, solid waste is, is subject to concurrency.
Right.
So we have to maintain capacity and we have to track level of service and, uh, capacity in landfill. So all of that framework is here.
We have a lot of capacity in landfill though, don't we?
Yes, we do.
In fact, right now it's not even standing in county most of the time, is it?
That's correct. I had a long talk. I got briefed. I learned all about our, uh, trash situation and it's actually pretty rosy. So we're doing good there.
So we need a motion to approve this portion?
Yes, yes.
Motion to approve. Second.
Did we need to open up the public party audience?
No, I did not ask. Does anybody wish to speak on this item? I'm sorry. CNN will close public. We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
While, uh, Kristen's pulling that up, if we want to, um, go ahead and have a, I guess, a motion to table the transportation sub-element?
Okay.
Motion table. Second.
Motion second, the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry, we have a whole bunch of updates to do apparently on the computer. We will bring that transportation element back to you probably, um, in May or June. I'm not sure. So tonight for the land development code, we have, really, this is the, the main body of the code. This is probably our biggest night. I see we haven't attracted too much of a crowd, so that's good. But you have chapters two, chapters four, and chapters five. And two is land use. Chapter four is resource protection standards. And chapter five is our design and development standards. I'm going to go through, uh, the major changes to chapter four. I would hope that we could, um, approve chapter four tonight, chapter two as well. And then chapter five, I think you're going to want to take action on it at your next meeting because you just got that. But I am going to brief you on the major changes that are in there and it is quite a bit.
Okay.
So we'll start with chapter four, if that's okay. Um, this is our resource protection standards and we did a lot here to create consistency with the comprehensive plan, which was already approved. You know, we already approved coastal management element and the, um, environmental element of the comprehensive plan. So the code draft that you have before you really implements what was already approved. It's, it's kind of the, the document that implements. But there are some new things in here that I want to point out. The wetland buffer standards are modified. I hope you have the same page numbers as I do, but basically, if you recall, we had a lot of discussion when we were doing the comp plan draft about sometimes our wetland buffer requirement actually causes unnecessary impacts to the wetland itself.
Do you know what page this is on, Kristen?
Yes, this is going to be on, yeah, it's on three. It starts on page three. And then on page four, on my version, you'll see where we added the access language. And this is currently a director's determination, so we've kind of brought that into the code. And basically, it says if you have to impact a buffer to access your site, but you don't impact the primary wetlands, then that's okay. Then there's also some new language here that allows encroachment into that secondary, into that buffer at discretion in cases where we would otherwise cause the applicant to have to fill the wetland or impact the wetland. And this is just something that we, we struggle with daily and, and honestly, the permitting agencies are not so happy with us either because sometimes our buffer causes them to have to permit wetland impacts. And we don't want to do that. The, the intent of the buffer is to provide a secondary level of protection, not to cause, uh, indirectly impact to that wetland area. There's also language here that, um, we had discussed previously about not having preservation areas on lots. So this would require them to keep that preservation area off, off of the lot.
This wetland stuff is not going to... It's not going to negatively impact what happened with wetlands, is it?
No, I think it's going to have a, a positive impact overall because like I said, and I should have brought my diagram, but, um, there are times where you may have an upland area that you could use for access, say for instance, but it's occluded by the buffer. And right now, our only remedy for that, because that buffer has been in the comp plan for so long, is for them to actually go permit and impact to the wetland to eliminate the buffer. And that is really contrary to all of the, um, policy and the intent of, you know, the comp plan. If you read the language, the language is, the, the intent of the comp plan and our wetland standards is protect the wetland itself.
Right.
You know, so you don't want a secondary requirement to cause unnecessary impacts to those wetlands. And that's kind of what, that's been happening. I mean, it's just been a struggle.
Common sense.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah. So, you know, we want to have the buffer when it's appropriate and we, and we, we've left that requirement in here, but we also want to be able to recognize when common sense has, has failed us and we're impacting the wetland.
Um, now, these standards don't have anything to do with the Dune Lakes, correct?
That's correct.
Or Dune Lakes is a whole different animal.
Yes, I mean, well, you could have a wetland in a coastal Dune Lake environment. Most of the time, they're going to be within that 100-foot shoreline buffer, which is, we haven't made any changes there. But, um, you know, you could have an instance of where they would use an upland for a driveway and eliminate the buffer, but, um, no, no major impacts.
Okay. Any other question on that?
Okay, the other, uh, big change I want to point out in here is that there is a density bonus for wetland enhancement and restoration. This was something that, um, a group had brought to the board during the, um, transmittal process and was approved into the comprehensive plan. So here is the implementing language. And that's kind of already been decided, but, um, we can see, you know, how this, this implementing language will work. And the key here is that this only applies to 100 acre or larger PUDs. Okay, so that's a unicorn, uh, especially for South Walton. We're not going to have too many of those. But, um, there are, there is that potential for someone to use this. And really what they want to be able to do is if you have isolated pockets of wetlands, kind of put things together where you have wetland creation or enhancement in areas and then you have uplands in areas so they can have, uh, a buildable area designing around those existing wetlands and created wetlands. So it gives a little bit more flexibility. And that also applies to native communities, but the bonus is not as, as strong there. The other major change that is in here is really, uh, bringing the, um, native community protection standards in line with the comprehensive plan. We had already talked about, um, being able to get updated language where we knew what areas we were trying to preserve. So we've done that. But then we also added in there that if you want to use the buyout, then you're going to have to have your preservation off lot. If you recall those discussions as we were going through the comprehensive plan, some of you probably weren't here for that, so that, that's, um, probably really confusing. But, um, we did, we did talk a lot about that when we changed the comp plan. And the main issue is that if preservation is included on a, a lot that someone has a home on, it's very di- difficult to make sure that that stays there and it's difficult for the homeowner. They really feel like that is their lot. They're, you know, and they put their swing sets in there and clear it out and then we have to go out there and tell them, you know, you can't do that and you have to do an expensive restoration plan. So we would, we've put an encouragement in here that if you want to use the buyout, then we will need you to put those in common area. But then when we talk about chapter five, you'll see that we've given a little bit back on that where we've said if you back up to one of these preservation areas and it's of sufficient width, you're going to get a break on your setback. So we'll talk about that when we get to chapter five. Last thing that's in here, uh, to point out is that we have established a preserv- preservation area maintenance permit. This has just been an ongoing issue for us is that we have these natural areas that we require people to preserve and then that's it. You can never touch it forevermore and no matter how overgrown or, um, it becomes and fire loads build up, duff on the ground, you can never go in there and do any kind of maintenance or cleaning. So we did establish a permit process in this chapter where as an applicant could come in to us and say, "I would like to clean up this preservation area and here are my parameters." And we have established some parameters also that you can't take out large trees. You can't, um, you have to put in native materials. You have to, um, only remove things that are not native or invasive or exotic. So it, it's not a free-for-all, but it is a parametered permit process that they can go through. And we have a registered landscape architect on staff now, which is a huge bonus for us that we didn't have in the past. And she is wonderful and she knows all about these trees and plants. So, um, she would, she helped draft this language and, uh, she's having a baby right now, but she will help us implement. And we just, we did, I don't know if anybody's been by, um, Redfish Village lately, but we did, uh, do some limited permit work in there under the guidelines that we have where he was able to clean up, take out vines and things that aren't supposed to be there. And also, you know, but this new permit also will let them keep things to the Firewise Community Standards because they become a fire hazard. So that's really all that, uh, the big stuff that's in chapter four. If anybody has any questions, uh, or need further clarification on any of that, I know it's a lot, but, uh, chapter five is going to be worse.
Well, um, one thing you didn't go over was the aquifer recharge areas?
Yes.
And the wellhead protection zones, sort of go with it? You might just explain all that. Where are those located?
We have, uh, a, a map of, uh, wells in the county. These are public supply wells that this is talking about and there's a, for the most part, the utility is going to own that property. And I'm not sure that we have any that they don't, but that's within that influence of that, that well. And we do have a map layer and we'll have it with me tonight, but we do have a map of where those are. Um, recharge is a, a, an interesting topic. Um, there's been some recent science on that that kind of debunks where we thought we were on that for a long time. And so I didn't really make much change to that, um, because I want to understand that a little bit better and maybe think about that more in the future. But there's an interplay there with stormwater that was not thought of before. And there's also an interplay there with, um... There's, there's, uh, there's a huge study about that that was recently done. And we could talk about it later, but it's, we, we used to think that you had to have all of this, um, regulation regarding pervious and impervious to make a difference there. And now they're starting to say, "Well, not so much anymore. It's kind of related to other things." So I didn't really make much change to that.
It seems like that recharge, aquifer recharge area would be a pretty big area though.
Yes, absolutely. Yes. I mean, that's, I, I mean, I saw two different maps, but I mean, it's got to be most of the county.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, yeah. And, and really all of the stormwater management and, um, pervious, impervious requirements that we have, all of those help with that certainly. You know, using the old, old model logic, um, which nothing has changed there. We do have a water resource caution area in South Walton. So the move's been to have wells north. There's been a, in the Florida and in South Walton is, it, there, is the water management district established a caution area and we'll talk about that when we do the, um, water supply plan update, which we're trying to get done once this is over.
Kristen, the floodplain, uh, protection section, is that being moved to a different chapter?
We just moved it to the back of this chapter.
Okay.
Yeah, and we didn't strike the whole thing out.
Okay.
Yeah, it was kind of stuck in the middle of all the environmental regulations and just hard to read. And you, there's a lot of moving around for improved readability. And we hope that we can put these code sections online in a searchable PDF with the tabs and with graphics. And it's got, when, when we get all the text drafting done, we're going to put it in a format that is really nice and easy so people can find things. So you see a lot of that pre-work going into these drafts and shifting stuff around.
Uh, Chris, there's a, a list of, um, prohibited uses for the aquifer recharge areas, one of which is feedlots. What, what in the world?
Yeah, that's old language. Um, nothing, nothing, it, it may have gotten moved in that way. It's, um, what page are you on?
Uh, 26.
Okay. If it's, oh, yes. I had, you see, I have this highlighted, um, because this map is really questionable to me right now. We've got to get a better idea of that and get an updated version.
Like, like Lee said, that probably includes most of the county and there's a lot of... What, what's the definition of a feedlot?
Well, the, the, that only applies to the wellhead protection zone, which is 500-foot radius from the public wells.
But, but it says, it says "and" aquifer recharge areas and at the start of B?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. And I was just want, I mean, some of the, it says septic tanks, but it also says that are permitted. So that's not a big deal, but the, the feedlot, we're, it's sort of...
I'm not, I'm not where, where you are.
B.
B, it says within wellhead protection zones and aquifer recharge areas are prohibited within designated and/or...
Probably looking at two different.
It's on 26.
Uh-oh.
Oh, we're str- okay, cones of influence.
Number six is feedlots or other concentrated animal facilities and not...
Yeah, that's old language.
I don't want to, I don't want to get into that.
Yeah, I really think, I think we need to, um, this is currently in the code, but we probably, we need to understand what the thinking was there. Um, because I think you, you're right. It's, that's not going to be feasible to aquifer recharge areas. It currently is, but, uh, let me look at that and see what those maps are. And that's the reason why I have that highlighted there is because I just, I'm going to have to work with the water management district a little bit, but we may have to do that later when I have a lot of time because, um, like I said, there's a lot of new research on that. That's current language that's in there now, so we're really not changing it.
A lot of it would depend on where the ma- because if, if it's just around Rock Hill, that would be one thing. If it's further north, you're going to get into some...
Yeah, see, I think that they've really changed.
I think it's confusing the way it's written under that B because it says within wellhead protection zones and aquifer recharge areas, but then it goes on to say, "The following uses are prohibited within designated wellhead, wellhead protection zones and/or aquifer recharge areas." So that list could be one or it could be both of those areas.
Well, I mean, and it says, um, septic tanks.
Yeah.
You know, so that probably is unrealist.
The septic tank may be re- may not be permitted within the wellhead protection zone, but it may be in the aquifer recharge zone.
Absolutely.
And the way that's written, it could be either or.
Yeah, but at least with the septic tanks, it says unless otherwise approved by the Department of Environmental Regulation. So at least you have something to qualify it for, but none of the other stuff has anything to qualify it for.
We'll have to, we need to figure out where that, that map is, what it looks like. So let me bring that back to you. We'll, we'll figure out what that map is. And it's definitely something that I've got here flagged because it didn't make a lot of sense to me either.
Yeah, otherwise you couldn't do anything up there. You know, from about Rock Hill north, it's going to be...
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that that's, and I, and it may be that it changed from the time that they originally adopted this to where we are today on these recharge areas. It may be a totally different ballgame.
Uh, the and/or, it says "and" in one spot and "or" in another.
Right. And that, that's confusing.
And some lawyer, no, no offense, get over it.
That's okay to offend lawyers.
I'm just building somebody for it.
Well, and it may be one of those things that we just ignored because of that, you know, because it's unclear and strange and nonsensical. But we don't want to have that. We don't want to do that. That's the point of this project.
It'd make me feel better to get it...
Absolutely.
You only former manager, do you?
Uh, that's, that's probably, no, I don't want them mad at me.
Let's keep, uh, maybe we'll just keep the rest of this moving and bring that section back. Yeah, so floodplain moved to, and, and a lot of this, you, you're going to find out as we go through, is really iterative because there'll be things in one section that should be in another. And we're, I'm winding up going back and forth a lot. You know, like this historical resource protection stuff, that's also in chapter five. And it was also in another place in a different way, so I think I'm going to leave it here, but take it out of chapter five. And that's, that's really all that I had. Unless anybody has anything else on the, um... And you'll see that the floodplain stuff got moved, uh, to the back. Just for ease.
A few of them are striking.
Yeah.
Yeah, half of it's dropped.
Which is probably good.
I, I think I understand where you're at on that wellhead stuff and I feel comfortable if you want to, if you're ready to go ahead with the rest of it and with, maybe with the caveat that we, um, look at what that recharge map is and look at the reasonability of some of those criteria in the draft that goes forward to the board.
Uh, one other thing, uh, I just wanted to make sure I read it right. The white sand protection restrictions, all that's still the same?
Yes, the county engineer did, uh, do a revision, uh, but I did not include it in here because I have not taken that to any public forum or workshop. And so I'm not comfortable moving forward in, in this update right now with that. And me, I don't think, I do think that something needs to be done, that we need to do some fixing there. But I, I would rather use my process where I talk to people and we go through the public process and then think about that.
So there's no change in that for now?
For now, right, correct.
I think that was all, all my questions.
But Kristen, I guess if, if we're comfortable with, with what we have here, you're looking for a motion on chap- or on section four?
Yes, and, and keep in mind this, we'll have two readings before the county commission and we're probably going to have some more workshops in between, so, um, but that will give us time to address the... and we're probably gonna have some more workshops in between, so, um, but that will give us time to address the issue with, uh, the recharge for sure.
Do you want us to pull out that section you're talking about, the re- aquifer recharge and wellhead section?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm make a motion, we approve with the ca- with the caveat that that's gonna be revisited at the forts at some point, or whenever y'all get ready with it. How about that?
Okay.
Is that how you wanted it? Or is that how you're comfortable with it?
Yes, I, I understood, um, you to say that we need to define the recharge area and
and make sure.
understand that those uses work or don't work and some of them may be unreasonable.
Well, maybe two separate lists, one for aquifer, one for wellhead.
Yes, right.
And the feedlots may not be, you know, even one of them.
Yeah, we have, we have a motion. Karen, do you understand that motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have to step back again, cause I forgot to ask for public comments, so.
Oh.
Is there anybody who would like to address this portion? CNN will close public comments. Motion, second on the floor, commissioners, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, now the big one. I'm gonna give you a month on marinate on this one, cause it's, uh, it's a whopper.
We didn't do anything on two yet, did we?
Um, I, I wanna do five first, if you don't mind, because, um, it has bearing on two.
Oh, okay. You're gonna have to speed read to get this one done.
Well, and Kristen, I guess your plan is to introduce the changes in chapter five and the board will put it out there next meeting?
Yeah.
Is that your plan?
Yes, yes, yes. I'd want to just talk tonight about five, no action, if you don't mind. And then you, um, have a month with it and I'm also gonna have some public workshops during that month. Um, because we just haven't had enough airtime. The public hasn't had enough airtime, but it's so complicated that it warrants going through, uh, a little bit tonight.
Are we gonna have another special meeting?
Hope not.
Okay.
Unless you really want to.
No, no, I was, so it'll be at our regular?
Yeah, it'll be at our regular.
I think so. I think if we get through the bulk of these changes tonight and we, you know, have time to think about them and discuss them tonight, then we should be ready to go pretty quickly and especially if we have some workshops and I get to talk to folks.
Okay, great.
So I gave you, uh, a little cheat sheet here for some of the bigger changes. But before we get into that, I want to go through some of the general stuff. Um, you're gonna see a lot of strike through on these supplemental standards that start in, in five point oh seven oh oh. And what these really are are conditional uses. And now that we have zoning, we're going to want to treat them as conditional uses and move them to chapter two. Because they are uses that we allow if you do certain things, which is the definition of a conditional use. And it's really, um, residential homes, RV parks, landing strips, sorry about the typo, commercial stables and recycling centers, salvage centers. So we allow these uses in certain land use categories, but they have extra standards. They have act- they have conditions, uh, that make them allowable by right. So you have to do certain things, uh, so we'll be moving that to conditional use.
That's well on back, right?
Yeah, these are just big things I want, cause people may see all this strike through and think, oh gosh, we're getting rid of all that, but we're not. We're gonna be putting that into, um, the one thing that happens with the creation of zoning is that we're able to do conditional uses and special exceptions, which we were not really doing before. Special exception is something that would go to the board adjustments, conditional uses, staff approval, providing that you meet certain conditions that are outlined in the code and it's pretty black and white. It's like, yes, you do or no, you don't. You're also gonna see a lot of strike through in five point oh eight, um, what, dealing with Grayton Beach and Point Washington. Now, these height and parking standards are in the height and parking standard general sections. So they didn't go away or get deleted. They just got put where our other parking and height standards are. So if you're a reviewer looking at this code, you know that in this area you have a different height. And, and that was already there actually, but the parking, we moved and same. In four, in Grayton is, uh, is, I believe it's forty, or maybe thirty, I don't know, I can't remember. But, um, if you look in five point oh two oh seven, which is gonna be up towards the front. Yeah, it's on page five. Starts on page five. Um, you'll see up there that it's forty in Grayton and in Point Washington is thirty-two. So those height limits are here with the other general height limits for the rest of the county, so that we don't miss it.
And the parking's different in those areas too?
The parking is different in Grayton Beach and we're gonna have a big discussion about that here in a minute. Um, Grayton has a parking requirement by square footage, um, whereas our other general county parking requirement is by number of bedrooms. So they had, do have a different parking standards part of their neighborhood plan. So that got moved to where the other parking standards are, so we know what it is and where it is.
Well, uh, the height limit in South Walton, what's?
No change.
Okay.
The only change that I made, um, and I have this in my slides, but we can go ahead and talk about it since we're on this page, page six, is that I cleaned up the public and private utilities and uses and infrastructure cause, um, it kinda had it in, in two different places. And it really isn't clear what a building or structure related to public health and safety and welfare are. Those are not zoning terms. Civic use is a zoning term, infrastructure is a zoning term. We, those will be defined and we know what those are. So that's just cleaned up to be clear.
Eric, did I, am, am I reading this right, that there's, uh, that North Walton has a seventy-five foot?
It does. It always ha- it has a, well, it's, it's fifty actually. Um, it's fifty and then you can get the seventy-five if you can have a huge setback based, related to your building height.
That's north, north of the bay?
Yes, that's always been in there. Uh, I did not change that, but I did change it and I have that in your cheat sheet. Um, I didn't understand why you would have that on your front setback. Um, that's a road.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I, it says side and rear in this draft. And we can debate that. I mean, that's, you know, up to you, but.
North of the bay with, is a larger setback requirement, but you can go to seventy-five feet.
I- if you can meet that setback requirement, right?
South of the bay stays at fifty, except Grayton, Point Washington. And it, what about inlet?
They, they have, they have their own, if you look on page five, um, it references the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan. They do have, they have different, um, limits as well. And we're, and we are updating that. I didn't change, I didn't add anything here because we are updating that plan right now. And there's a big effort going on. We've been working with the neighborhood and that's an exciting project. I think it's gonna be our first, um, really cool neighborhood plan. I, I'm looking forward to seeing how that turns out.
Where is this?
Inlet Beach.
Okay.
There's a lot of inconsistencies between the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan, the comp plan, the LDC that need to be cleaned up so that everybody knows what we're approving and what the rules are if you're building something. Uh, so we're working with the neighborhood on that and that's kinda fun. Lots of potential there for a cool plan. Okay, so I wanted to know why all that was struck out. There's also, there's a section in here that's kind of a policy issue. Um, the code requires us to adopt a greenways and trails master plan and, um, have a sort of commission that oversees that master planning effort.
What page?
It's on, this is gonna be, I should've put that in there. It's after the buffer. This is all current, current language. I didn't make any changes to it, but I, like I've been saying, we should do it or strike it. And we do have sort of a start on this chance. Um, the public works recently adopted a trails master plan that they took to the board, which is awesome. They've been doing a lot of tremendous work on that. Um, and they've been very diligent in planning for trails and building trails, um, as you can see. I mean, okay, it starts on page fifty-four. It's section five oh three oh oh.
Reading my stuff, I was.
There's a lot in here about greenways, master planning and, and trails. And, and we've talked about it a lot, but there's, there's not a lot of momentum and we probably should decide, you know, it's okay to leave it in here if it's something that the community desires or the leadership desires, um, but if it's something that is just never gonna happen, we probably shouldn't. Because currently we do, uh, allow developers to dedicate a greenway system and they receive a density bonus for that. Uh, so we are, um, it's, it's not truly an exact, and I don't think, because it's a bonus in exchange, but we do have bits and pieces of this that we've collected from developers over the years. And the language indicates that we'll take those bits and pieces and create a master plan, which is a beautiful thought. I mean, I, you know, it's a.
What's reality?
It was part of, part of the trust plan, actually is a big part of the trust plan. Um, and we've acted on that to a great extent with our trails planning. You know, it, it's not like we haven't done it, but probably going to that next level. Um, reality is probably would take a grant to get a plan like that done. Um, we wouldn't have the.
It sounds like a great idea. I mean, I don't think.
What, what was you saying about another board?
It, it talks about there being a board that oversees this greenways, master planning effort, um, like an appointed type citizen board. And, um, you know, it may be that we, we just wanna change this a little bit to be more realistic and leave it in or we wanna take it out, um.
I don't see why we would take it out. I think it's a, I mean, if it can be done, if there's some changes that could be made to the structure that makes it easier to implement, I think that would be better. But I think, I think it could be a great benefit to South Walton, if you could, if you could do it.
Uh, if you take out, um, part of five oh, oh three oh two about the committee and, and let that, let it fall under the planning department, wouldn't that be a
I think so.
more realistic?
Yeah, I mean, these are normally done that way. Y- you know, it's, what greenways are in essence is they're a system of areas that have kinda layered public benefits, so it may be stormwater, resource protection and a trail together or a linked system for resources or for natural communities. There's a lot of different ways that that could be done.
If you appoint a committee, you gotta have minutes and lawyers and notice and, and all this other stuff.
Taking shots at you.
Well, it really is, yeah.
And not you, that's, that's a Cindy lawyer thing, but, but, but I mean, it's not really, it's just adding another level of bureaucracy for no real apparent purpose.
Yeah, and we have planning commission.
But I, but I think, you know, not to argue with you, cause I don't disagree, but I think at the same time, it gives people who want to be a part of doing that, the opportunity to be a part of it, which I think is always good.
Yes.
Um, I, I understand that it could be another committee for Mac to have to worry about or somebody in the planning office to have to worry about. But I think that it can give citizens great buy-in to that process as well. That's just another thought.
It's hu- hugely important. Um, and on the three thirty-one study, we have a work group, but they're not appointed and they're not elected officials, so we can meet and, you know, talk and so that's, and that's.
But it could be just a volunteer group. It doesn't necessarily have to be appointed.
Yeah.
But you could say, listen, we're gonna put this together. Anybody wanna volunteer for it?
Yes.
I think that may take a lot of those restrictions out of the way, but still give citizens the opportunity to participate and help set this up.
Is this something where the benefit to the developer is that they can add bonus density points?
Yes, they get bonus density points.
But there's not any way that they can be penalized for not doing it then?
No, it's optional. It's optional. And they, some of them have done it. I mean, we do have projects and continue to get projects that will have a piece of this. Um, but without some kind of coordinated master plan of, is this gonna link up? Is this gonna be a meaningful dedication? It.
You mean like some of our sidewalks?
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, I just, I, I said, I think that if you have that, if there's a way to do it without creating the.
Bureaucracy?
Bureaucracy, that I think it can be a good thing and, and get, get people involved and get communities involved. And setting that thing up. I just, I don't wanna create a level, another planning commission type setting where you have to worry about all the notices and all that stuff. But there's a way, I, there's gotta be a way where you can have volunteers come together and work on something.
Mm, absolutely.
Well, the, the other fear is, is, is that you add time to get projects approved. One of the, the, one of the things you hear over and over again is the length of time it takes to get permits. So if, if you're adding another level, it has to be.
I don't, I don't think it would be, it's not a requirement, so.
No, and.
But if, if you're depending on, on, uh, a density, uh, by, a, a density bonus to get a project where it meets the standards and you have to go before some, I mean, there is a, there is a danger that you're adding more steps, more time.
It would probably be more, if we had a plan, either your dedication will be meaningful to that plan or, in other words, if, if we're giving a density bonus, there should be the exchange back, in my, in my view, for a meaningful dedication to the public, which is what it requires, that you dedicate your greenway to the public. So it should be something that we're gonna use and that is gonna be beneficial, cause the developer's getting that bonus.
I think that's separate from this committees. I mean, if, if you, you or my, if one of y'all were making that determination that this meets this criteria and that the criteria is laid out in a common sense manner, then, and you could do that a lot quicker than calling the committee.
Oh, yeah.
Now, I, the, the one thing that I thought, I thought, or I think that we were trying to do is sort of streamline some of these processes and this is not streamlining. This is adding another level, another layer that somebody's gonna have to check a box to.
I think that's where you keep this out of that formal process and you don't, you don't make it. I mean, they can say, this is going to meet the requirements of what, what we have to have. As far as tying things together, design and putting stuff together, you could have a group of citizens work on that, but that don't have to be.
The planning process.
The plan, yeah, it doesn't have to be part of the approval. They don't have to have it finalized.
They could, you could take the language out of the, and they could have, I mean, y'all having a commi- a committee a lot easier.
Yeah, I agree.
Take it, taking this, this langu- because if you have language in here, then that becomes, you know, more of a, this is what you gotta do and somebody will use it against you. And where if, if, if you get, Mac wants to call a committee to come look at these standards or the, this prod, that's on him and he doesn't really have to have. Cindy doesn't have to drive from the Phoenix Act to, to be down here with us, sort of kind of thing. So it'd be a lot cleaner.
I understand.
And, and.
We have somebody who wanted to make a comment and then I'll go ahead, thank you. You want, you still wanna? Yeah, go ahead. It's out of order, but I think through this process, a lot of things are gonna be out of order, so.
Well, I thank you very much, Melissa Ward, we're Don't Like a Chipman. I haven't seen, uh, the revision, so I.
I haven't seen, uh, the revision, so I apologize in front. I wanted to specifically address the, uh, greenway, the discussion that y'all are presently having. Um, many years ago, the only avenue for the public, the citizens, to, um, make sure that the county retained these greenway trails and corridors was by a lot of serious advocacy at a planning commission meeting. Some of you may or may not know, I know Lee was, uh, aware of it, is that you could be here for hours because an advocacy group would be arguing with a developer about interconnectivity of these trails. I do not suggest that you do away with anything in its entirety, and I don't think that's what you're saying, if you pardon me for interpreting. But I do think that it is necessary to have a coordinator who maybe works for the Public Works Department, Parks and Recreation, that sort of thing, that at least puts an eye on an application, that understands that it's not just, I decide I'm gonna give a little tiny piece and I'm gonna call that a greenway. That's not how it works. It's never how it works. And it needs to be identified by a professional, not just somebody's best guess or, um, uh, no offense again, attended any kind of common sense. Cause common sense has given greenways away for Walton County for the last twenty years. What I would suggest too is to understand your staff is extremely overworked and understaffed to get the jobs done that they need to. They are working as hard as any bumblebee I've ever seen, and they need to be able to diversify and put some of that work where it needs to be placed. So I would recommend, just as a person, just as listening to this conversation, that if you're going to take out the committee potential of that language in the code, that you think about identifying a particular person who works in, in either the environmental department or Public Works or Parks and Recreation to head up the review of that, and add that person to the technical review committee that looks at every site plan. Because there's always a potential for a developer to do something better for the community than just take. Thank you.
I like, I like professional and, and doing it on a timely basis a lot better than.
Yeah, I do too.
I agree. I don't think it needs another committee. I think it needs to run timely with a development review.
Thank you, Melissa. All right. That made a lot of sense. Mac, is, is there a way to do that or?
This language is not new language.
Right, I understand that.
It's been here since about ninety-seven and there may have been a committee for a few minutes.
Yeah.
Some years back. Um, we could probably handle this with, um, a, an advisory working group as far as this, and this is, all this is, is where do we think the greenways need to be?
Right.
Countywide.
Well, that's, I mean, however you think is best handled, like Danny, I don't wanna hold up the process.
But as far as, as reviewing requests for greenway credit, we do that routinely now. Uh, we've got an environmental planner that reviews that, um, um, compared to the language that we do have in Land and Development Conference plans. So the implementation portion of it, I don't see as a big deal. That's, that's stuff that we do every day. Um, the committee, I think, was more of an effort to get citizens involved, much like you were suggesting, in a broader scale, not on a project by project basis, um, but big picture, where should the greenways be?
That's what I think. I don't think, like Danny said, I don't think it's a project by projects. You can't have a committee look at that. You would never get anything done.
No, we wouldn't do that.
What I, what I, I think is, if you, we don't need things in the, in the plan that we're not doing. And like I said, we're not, we haven't done this committee in years. So, but if you wanna have a committee, you, you can have a committee in time you want to. But if it's in here, then it's sort of like a, you got to. So if we take that out, then that gives you the leeway to do, I mean, if you, if you wanna commit, convene a committee, you can convene one, uh, but it doesn't have all the trappings of, you know, a committee.
Can't we just have y'all look at it and bring it back to us?
Yeah, and I really was just looking for a direction on the plan, the master plan, because they, they get a break on concurrency for Parks and Rec as well as the density bonus. So that's what's concerning to me, is that because it intervenes with concurrency, that we meet the criteria here or either we remove it. And the criteria is that we're supposed to have a master plan. And you could have a committee to work on that, but I mean, it's not something we're gonna do tomorrow. It's gonna be, but if we leave it in here, we, we will work on it. If we take it out, we won't.
What do you suggest?
Well, I think it's, I mean, I think the community, you know, if we, if we are liking the trust plan and we feel like that's important and that's the policy vision for the county, then we should do it. Um, because that's a big part of that trust plan.
So you're saying leave it in?
Leave it in, tweak it, take out the committee requirement, and then probably next year we'll seek to implement.
And we could start in the south where it's a lot more, uh, crucial.
Yes, it really, absolutely. It, it only deals with South Walton.
I mean, up where I live, everything is green. I don't have a greenway problem.
You don't, you're missing any greenways?
We got tons of greenway.
Well, just strike the committee. Okay, now we're gonna move to your cheat sheet before we go into chapter two. Okay, number one, let me get you to the page. We're gonna talk about setbacks. Page two.
That's the easiest page you've given us tonight.
You think? Um, I tell you what was hard was landscaping. I hope I never have to do that again in the next twenty years. I spent a lot of time on that, uh, and going back and forth with matrix. Um, so, okay. Setbacks, number one. Recall that you did something, uh, at one of your meetings. You asked us to address compatibility between, um, the larger short-term rental homes and the neighborhoods that they are residing in or that they are being built in. So you're gonna see a number of things in here in response to that direction that we got from you. And we also were directed by the board to look at compatibility issues just in general as part of this update with our mixed-use categories. Remember, this has been an ongoing discussion. So you're gonna see a lot of these things that are in here are in direct response to that. And, um, number one is, um, a change from the, uh, the, there's the original. One thing I wanna be careful that we don't do, um, is penalize mixed-use master plan development potential. Um, if somebody has a common plan of development and they've designed a project to be internally compatible and compatible with the surrounding area that it's in, you don't wanna load that up with a lot of setbacks and, um, design requirements, because that can, would just really work against you. So you're, you see a change here that, um, exempts, uh, mixed-use developments and also, um, eliminates that front setback. Um, we don't want to prevent someone from pulling a building up to a street and putting parking in the rear, for instance. And so, and there's really no real compatibility issue on that front setback. Again, that gets back to what we talked about earlier. So if you look, um, the, in the table here, these are just the setback requirements for the most part that we've always had. But they're put in a table form, so they're easy to read and understand, cause that was written in text before and it was kinda hard. If you look on the next page, you'll see that text. Um, it's struck through there, the one, starts with one, um.
Well, the structures that are over four stories would, I guess, be north of the bay, because you've got a height restriction of everything south of the bay of four stories or fifty feet.
It'd be pretty rare to get four stories. It's possible, but rare, yes.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. So that would be considered anything north of the bay if you're gonna go up.
More than four.
Yeah.
Well, this, this, this requirement was already in here, this, um, this is not new language, the two feet for every story over four to a maximum of forty. And actually, it may be in conflict with the other requirement, the, the seventy-five and the one and point two five times. So we may need to.
I think they are in conflict.
We need to look at that, um, because you're right. It's, it's gonna be North Walton and it's probably gonna be in conflict as we go, we're gonna talk about three thirty-one in a little bit. Um, so. The new policy is number two, um, and it's only talking about single-use, non-residential uses, which are commercial, and single-use, multi-family residential when you're adjacent to an existing single family. And this is a little bit additional, um, so it's one half foot for each one foot and building height over thirty. And that was there to address compatibility. So the most that, that, that's gonna increase you by, um, is if you got, you can go up to fifty feet, so you get another twenty feet, um.
Ten feet on setbacks.
Another ten feet of setbacks.
Mm-hmm. And this is for, um, if you have an apartment building or a commercial, single-use, single-use, so it excludes your mixed-use developments or, uh, developments that have, you know, residential in top or commercial at the bottom.
You still don't do nothing with these monster houses, though, right?
This does not, but later on, we're gonna talk about those quite a bit. So this is something to think about. I wanted to point this out. Um, that's number two there in your cheat sheet, so you can reference back if you wanna make a note that this is five point oh 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 three, and we're gonna talk about this with the public a little bit. Um, on the next page, page three, there's also a change. Uh, we constantly wrestle with what can be put in setbacks. Um, and, and it really is a compatibility issue. When, when we listen to community, we hear a lot, especially South Walton, about everything's crammed, 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 touching, you know, uh, the things are starting to run together. Well, some of that can be because of what's allowed in a setback versus what's not. So is your setback fully unobstructed or is it not? And this gives a little bit more clarity there. Um, it, it only allows twenty percent for things that, that are non-elevated. So if I have a walkway around my house or something like that, I can have that up to a certain extent and it defines that instead of it just being, you know, something that takes up the entire setback. Swimming pools and those types of things and their decks have always been required to be in the primary setback, so there was no change there. But where that gets muddy is when they try to have a deck or something that's on the ground and before, um, you know, that kinda all merges together in reality. So that could be contributing some to that crammed-in kinda feel or look that people talk about.
Why, why is the roof overhangs stricken?
Yes, again, the crammed-in, you know, if you want to address compatibility, this is one way to do this, is to eliminate that roof overhang encroachment.
So that, so from now, or if this is passed, the roofs can't be in the setbacks?
Right. So what you're gonna do with these two things is kinda open up that space in between.
That's good.
But it is, it is a regulatory change, so that's, but that's one way to kinda skin that cat, if you will. Okay.
I've never thought of that.
Okay, so number three. Number three is where we talk about, um, the break on the setback for the preservation that I mentioned previously. So it gives them, um, you know, if you back up to a dedicated preservation area, and it's, um, I think it gives an average of ten feet in depth along the lot line, um, you can eliminate your setback up to the five feet, basically, for workability. So that, that, if they have to take that preservation off the lot, at least it, they're not gonna lose as much because of that setback break.
We don't, we don't want them to be taking preservation on lots, correct?
Yeah, it, that hasn't worked out, um, for, for us or the homeowners.
And we, we pretty well changed, that, that's hard to do now, isn't it?
No, well, we, we basically, we didn't say you had to do it. We incentivized it by saying, if you wanna use the buyout, um, you, you need to take that stuff and put it in a common area. And if you do do that, then you have this setback also as an incentive, setback reduction. Okay. Do you, do you wanna talk about here grumbling? So we may, do you wanna talk about?
No, it's all right.
Okay.
They're just talking, they're just talking about how good a job you're doing.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just for a bit of clarification, um, in our statement of where we are trying to push all the preservation and wellings into separate, uh, parcels, um, we haven't seen, I, in fact, I can't recall one, a property that was subject to preservation where they weren't proposing to buy out at least some portion of it. So that, while that's not an absolute, you have to put all your, your preservation into a, a discreet parcel. Uh, the market is doing that for us.
Good.
Yeah, I think they'll be using it. Okay.
I'll try and hold off, because I think Cindy's gonna need to take a break here in a little bit, so.
Is it seven?
You got a few minutes? You wanna go now? Okay, let's go ahead and take about a fifty, is that fifteen minutes enough? Fifteen minute break, then we'll come back. You ready?
Bring us back in.
There he is.
We got our legal mind here, so we're okay.
Wait, who?
Not you. You can call me back to order.
Okay, I forgot what we're doing. All right.
Number three, you're.
Yes, that, um, the, the, um, setback reduction, we talked about that a little bit. So I think we're on number four, which is dealing with accessory structures. Again, this, we've really already covered this. This is about, you know, what can be placed in a setback and what cannot be placed in a setback, getting at compatibility and creating that space in between. But that actual change, um, is on page three, methodology for determination of setbacks. And can leave where we already talked about that too. Boy, we don't, we weren't covering these really fast. Okay, um.
So an above-ground swimming pool or something like that can't be in the setbacks?
Yes, and they never could be. That, that's, yeah, but it was, it was all the associated stuff that if it was, if it was on the ground and kinda separated from the pool, it got kinda muddy about whether or not it could be in the setback or not, because we didn't have this guidance on the twenty percent limitation. And, um, you know, the pool and its associated deck were always supposed to be in the setback. It's just when they get kinda ancillary walkways and things that aren't elevated. And I mean, all of that eliminates yard and can contribute to that kind of lack of space.
So this is saying that you can put non-elevated structures in there as long as it doesn't eliminate more than twenty percent?
Right. Cause right now, we don't have that twenty percent guidance and that gets kinda muddy. So, um, the height limit, um, we did talk about that, where we've removed the front setback. Um, again, I don't think we ever wanna preclude someone from having a building pulled up to a street and parking in the rear. Uh, and having an additional front setback requirement could do that.
Let me ask you something about that. If you, if you build the building right to the road, to the property line, and say, ten or fifteen years from now, traffic's become such that the county needs to acquire more right-of-way. Well, what you've done is made that right-of-way by not having that setback. You've made that right-of-way a lot more expensive, cause you don't have to take that building down.
We have, no, because we, we do have right-of-way protection requirements that will increase your. We had, no, because we we do have right-of-way protection requirements that will increase your setback. This this just eliminates that, you still have that setback, and you still have that front setback from your property line. This just eliminates the additional.
Okay, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's, yeah, and we're we are gonna talk about that.
So we're not building roads up to the road, we're gonna back up.
No, um, you know, in some cases, you may wanna do that, if you have, um, you know, adequate right-of-way already established for the type of road it is, or you have a design plan in place, and we're gonna talk about the right-of-way protection standards a little bit here in a minute, cause that's been a nightmare, everybody knows.
Well, that, but because you don't wanna box yourself in, and I don't know what's gonna be in place, I mean, I, something that's not needed now, twenty years from now, we may need a foreline.
Right, absolutely.
So the county has to acquire more property.
South Walton, you're kidding me.
I'm not worried, I'm talking about North Walton.
Yeah, I mean, on on thirty-eight, you know, where you probably have a permanently established right-of-way, I don't see that changing. I mean, you you would want to, you would not want to prevent someone from doing that type of walkable, uh, development that is is really more desirable than just to see it asphalt parking lots. You gotta be careful in codes that you don't kinda tweak out the bad, the good stuff, along with, you know.
I got a question back on that, uh, structures and the the twenty percent of the,
Yeah.
the total requires, that the total, that meaning of the setback all the way around?
Right.
Okay, and did you just come up with a square footage and?
Mm-hmm, it's all, we call them yards, all setback yard area.
Okay, just didn't know why they were determining that.
And if that wasn't clear to you, then this language needs to be changed, probably, because, um.
It needs to be clear where that twenty percent's coming from, I think.
Yeah. Sometimes clear to me, but not to everybody else, so that's a good point, we'll look at that a little bit.
I assume it's twenty percent of the entire yard.
It is.
Okay.
But we might need to beep that up a little bit to make sure everybody, uh, reads it that way. Uh, we, on, in page five, we are gonna have a map here of these neighborhood plan areas, so it's really clear where the specific requirements apply. If you're not from here, and you're doing development here, you need to be able to readily find the areas where you have different height requirements, et cetera, so we're gonna have that map included in here.
And just to make, just to say it again, nothing's changed, it's, we're just basically doing a a tab, a table.
Right, on the general setbacks, that's right, there's.
I mean, and on the height limits, we're just.
On the height, yeah, nothing's changed.
It's just a table, we're not changing it.
Yeah, except for that front setback eliminate, uh, additional front setback elimination, which it just kinda isn't nothing, but could be, causes interpretation problems. Um, okay. There's, in the next sections here, I know, I think we're all good. We still have our floodplain, wetland densities, um, I do wanna direct you to page twelve, where we start landscaping.
Uh, for, are we through with the cheat sheet?
No, we're not, we're gonna come back to the cheat sheet, but we're gonna leave it for a minute, go to landscaping, there's just too much here to to, you're you're really just gonna have to read the whole boring landscaping section over this month, because it's drastically changed, and there's really too much here to talk about, but, um, we had a approved plant list that actually had plants on it that were invasive, and it just was needed to be fixed, there was a whole diatribe about zero escape that was confusing, that's get, been stricken, um.
Are we allowing kudzu now?
No, we not gonna allow that, um, but.
Uh, it's stricken right there, that's why.
Yeah, stricken, um, because the way it it was, it was kinda like those were the only two things you couldn't have, and then later on, it would say, you can't have anything that's invasive or invasive or exotic, and please don't ask me what the difference between that is. But, um, Kelly knows, and, um, so we just, we kinda, we did a big reorganization here, where we moved everything together that's supposed to be together, um, we updated that approved tree and plant list, and it's important to point out that you can have trees that are not on this list, provided that they are, uh, acceptable. You know, you still have to have seventy-five percent of your landscape plan be native, uh, all of those requirements are still here. The zero escape stuff is drastically reduced. This honestly is not as much of an issue as it was, say, twenty years ago, um, people generally strive now not to be watering plants too much, um, so, but we still have the requirement in here, and just by definition, if you're planting native plants to seventy-five percent, you really are doing zero escape, so some of that was super, superfluous, you know, don't, don't really need, uh, to say that. So there's a new list, fancy list, um, and then when you get over to, uh, wait, I did wanna point out, okay, there is, um, a new requirement here, uh, J, on page fourteen, and we modified, this used to say ten-foot planted area, and now it says five, but it talks about, um, shrubs and sixty percent of the street furniture at maturity, so it, it doesn't really dictate a width to you as much, but it more dictates what needs to be in that streetscape. So you can, you can read all of that later, uh, page nineteen, land use buffers, big changes are here. The current code buffers really contemplate existing land uses, uses that are already built. And more typical is to do that, but to also contemplate the potential uses in the adjacent zoning district. So you're gonna see a table here that deals with when you are abutting a vacant property, but it's zoned, say, for a single-family residential, or it's zoned for a certain use, and there's a variable buffer, instead of just the state straight ten or twenty, we had in our comp plan before, there's a table here that varies this buffer depending on the level of incompatibility. So obviously, if you have industrial next to residential, it's gonna be bigger, if you have, uh, single-family residential next to single-family zoning, you may not need a buffer. So that's, that's a big change, but if you, if you look on page twenty-four, um, it talks about existing development. So these are the standards you use when your use is near, and these are the the current things that we have, the current buffers that we have, but we changed this a little bit, um, like, if you look at A, ten A, it's, you you're gonna need this only when you have single-family uses that have different densities or lot sizes. So if you have a single-family that's the same lot size, next to a single-family that's the same lot size, and the same, you know, kinda density, you you really don't need a huge buffer. Um, if you have, it, so it kinda changes that ten-foot to be related to incompatibility, not just there. Um, and then that goes on basically to follow what we currently have for existing uses. E, screening wall alternative is new, totally new. This gives you an option of putting in a wall where it's allowed, they're not allowed everywhere, like scenic corridor, you can't have a wall, but, um, where they are allowed, you could use a wall with some plantings as a buffer alternative, and this has to be a masonry or similar type wall, and not a picket fence. So, but that gives them some options, so if you're dealing with limited space, but you need a really good screen, you have that option that you didn't have before. And it gives some parameters about how those have to look, they have to be architectural, they have to have variation. Okay, so then there's a lot of striking of the old tree lists and all that good stuff. And then it's gonna bring us, uh, to parking. Page thirty-one starts, I'm sorry, never mind, that's parking in the vehicular areas, that's really not changed. Uh, striking all the zero escape. Okay, it's actually page forty-five, forty-four, forty-four, off-street parking and loading. Here's the big one. When I went out and talked to the public, the main things that I heard about the the short-term rental homes in terms of compatibility are twofold, parking all over the place and trash. Um, the trash thing is kinda working on a separate track with some stuff that's happening, but the parking, there's only really two ways to to think about that, either you can say, like we did in Great Beach, the bigger your house, the more parking you have to have. And that has resulted, um, and we had a recent plan in there that had, you know, like nineteen parking spaces on a house, um.
A big house, though, isn't it?
Yes, yeah, um, but what happens when you do that is you forego open space, stormwater, landscaping, yards, setbacks, all of those things are given to parking. Um, and you still have nineteen cars, which are on the road and all of that, so that's one way to to look at that, the other way, and this idea actually came from the community, not from me, so, um, is to consider a maximum for short-term, short-term rentals.
A maximum what?
Instead of a minimum, you have a maximum, and that is what you see here in this language on page forty-five, um, where we define those those structures not as single-family homes, so we're we're not talking about them in the way that we're talking about single-family homes, we're talking about them as a different use, and that would be defined and established in our definitions, um, and they would have a maximum instead of a minimum.
How is that, how is, how is that gonna work to to limit the monster houses, I mean?
It won't limit the size of the monster house. The other things that we've done, dealing with the setback encroachment, and the roof overhangs, and those things will allow more space in between, uh, the height limit also limits the size that we have in place, but, you know, it's not going to just wholesale reduce the square footage of those buildings. What it will do is hopefully prevent some of the kinda bait and switch where they show us a house that only has two bedrooms, but in actuality, when we get out of the permitting process, it has eight. Um, there are life safety issues there, building code issues, um, because if they change that after the fact, they may not have to egress, or the other things that you're supposed to have when you have bedrooms. So the maximum would also, uh, remove that incentive to have a permit application that's not what you're really doing, cause it won't matter how many bedrooms you have.
It's not gonna solve the parking problem, though. I mean, it's gonna say you can, you can put a maximum of six parking spaces, but.
Enforcement would have to ensue, right.
Exactly.
They're still gonna be on the street.
I think we would have a pretty significant transition period, um, and it it's really gonna be a lot on the property owners and the rental companies to to let people know that you can't bring this many cars, and if you do, you get ticketed, I mean, there would have to be an enforcement mechanism established.
That's a change, that's.
Code enforcement. But at least we would have the ability to say to them, you know, and this could be retroactive, so if you have a plan approved for a number of parking spaces, and you bring more cars in addition to that number of parking spaces you have on your site plan, then those cannot be there.
Wouldn't a way to to limit these houses be to to, um, tweak the impervious pervious ratios? In other words, you can't build seventy-five percent of the lot?
You could do that, um, that's an option, they're already pretty, we we already have some pretty good ratios, but when you really drill that down, what's happening is a lot of stuff's getting crammed into those, you know, because of the allowance for the.
Well, what you do is you end up harming somebody who truly wants to build a larger home.
The parking. The parking gets crammed in there, the, yeah, yeah, so that's.
You just get a bigger lot, I mean.
Well, there's not a lot of bigger lots available some places, that's the problem. But, I mean, I I agree with you, it's ridiculous to have thirty-seven people sleeping in a house, and call it a single-family residence, a hotel, you know, but you can't restrict it the way you can at a hotel. But if you say, we're gonna limit you further as to what you can build on your lot, you're harming the next guy who wants to build a house to live in, if he wants to build a bigger house.
Yeah, I mean, if if see, it, well, uh, the way I look at it is this, is it the incompatibilities, or is, if it's the size of the structure that's the issue? And that's not what I heard from people, and I've I've been workshopping this and talking to people, and I, I mean, you you've probably heard a lot more than I have, so you would know better, um, but.
Just the compatibility versus incompatibility.
I hear the parking over and over again, and if that's the problem we're trying to fix, there's either, two ways to do that. Either you make them have more parking, or you give them the max.
The the, it's parking and and the generation of stormwater, and if you've got seventy-five percent of the lot covered,
Yes.
I mean, where's the water gonna go, and it, so, and that's what you hear over and over and over, is they're parking in the street, so you can't get by, and emergency vehicles can't get in, and then the the water's just coming in my lot, because they're building these lots up, and then they're putting their, putting a roof over all of it, and so the water's coming in my house.
Yeah, eliminating the eighteen-inch, I mean, the eighteen inches, I mean, that's a foot and a half, and on two sides, that's three feet. Um, so, I mean, if you really think about some of those things, and then allowing the parking in the setback, allowing all this other stuff in the setback, so while we may have a really good impervious surface ratio of sixty percent in most cases, or forty percent, we, all this other stuff gets crammed in there, it's not pervious, but it's getting crammed in there, and so I think we've tweaked a lot of that other stuff there to get account of that, what you're talking about, but parking and stormwater are not compatible. So more parking means less stormwater.
I think limiting, having a maximum number of parking spaces is a good idea. The whole parking problem, though, is a, is a, is an enforcement problem, it's not a code problem, either.
It would create a huge enforcement burden, there's no doubt, and that has to be really clear and understood as we move forward, if we decide that this is the way the community wants to go.
But the enforcement is not, I mean, that's a whole different agency that has to do that, and, uh.
I think it would be our code enforcement, if it's in the land development code, right?
Well, it.
Right, it's always been the sheriff.
Well, and I guess my concern too, is if we have this maximum places for off-street parking, isn't that gonna just encourage more on-street parking?
Well, you would, we would have to, you would, it would have, they would have to have, be penalized for doing that, and, I mean, it would take a while.
Well, that would be the sheriff's office for the on-street.
So, so what's your talk?
Disconnect between those two agencies. And right now, the way our, uh, cause it's not in land development code, it's in our code ordinances, it's kinda backwards how we do parking.
We need to fix.
Park in the right-of-way unless there's signage, whereas most places have it that you cannot park in the right-of-way unless it's clearly designated.
We may need to work on, it may be, it's, I I don't think this is the only thing that needs to happen here for this to work, but we kinda gonna need to get conceptual approval before we, I mean, I think everybody needs to be like, okay, this is a good direction, before we start looking at all these bits and pieces and seeing if it's gonna work, but.
It could work if it's three.
But you gotta have, you gotta get the the enforcement agency to sign on.
Yes, yeah. And I, and I did do a lot of research in other communities, and I will tell you that the maximum is a way that communities that I consider really good planning communities, that's what they've done, so, um, you know, it's not totally uncharted.
Well, that also, I think, gives direction to whoever's building whatever they're building, I mean, they know that's the limit. Is it gonna be followed?
Yeah, I think that it's gonna be up to the rental people and the home, people renting out the houses to say, look, you can have as many people as you want here, but you cannot have all these cars here, and there is places that they can park, um, off, you know, lots, the TDC's building one, there there's places that you can leave a car. Yeah, you can't, no, well, I mean, see, that's another piece.
That's their problem.
So I did talk to them about that, and they said, oh, yeah, they could use those, but they don't realize, can't park overnight.
Yeah, the parking, parking lots are not supposed to.
So you'd be, you'd be long-term parking, almost, basically, maybe there's a fee for that, I don't know.
One of the the poster children for, is the the large houses down the, on the waterfront along thirty-eight, that they're just, I mean, where you can't see the, that's what you hear, is we can't see the water anymore, because they built this house across the whole lot. because they built this house across the whole lot. This really doesn't do a whole lot for those folks.
No, it doesn't, yeah, I mean, the other things that we, we talked about may, um, you know, the encroachment...
Eighteen-foot thing.
All of that, and the, you know, some of the stuff they cram in there, if you cram parking in there, it's, it's, the visual effect of that is there's nothin' I can see between. So, it may, that may help with some of that. But no, it's, you, you, this does not aim to selling people what size house they can have. And quite frankly, I mean, we've got some people that have really big houses and there's only two people in there. You know?
If they got the money, that's their business. Ain't my job to tell them.
I, I agree with this, the maximum, I think that's a good idea.
With, with the caveat that there's gotta be some enforcement making it, are they gonna be in the street?
Yeah, well, I mean, you can't, you can't force any... The, the, the alternative is to say you can, you have to have a minimum of four spa, or a minimum of two spaces, and they can put up to four, but you still have to have enforcement for more people parking in the street.
Enforcement.
This is not going to affect enforcement, and you can't dictate enforcement to the sheriff's office through this document. And that's just something that's gonna have to come.
Well, we're gonna have to all get together and...
There's no, yeah, there's no way, you can, we can say in here, you can have four parking spaces if the sheriff's department agrees to enforce parking.
No, you can't do that.
You can't do that. I mean, I think you have to limit it and then work on getting the enforcement or getting the compliance from the rental agencies or other people.
But I don't want anybody to think this is the, the panacea for all...
I think they do.
Nothing ever is, is it?
We, we have...
I just, I just wanted to say, there's some connection on stormwater and parking. Don't connect those two things, cause those, all those old houses were built before storm, stormwater regulations came into factor. We handle that now with stormwater designs, every bit of it. We can use pervious, paint roofs, inlets, exfiltration system. I wouldn't employ those dudes, we can definitely handle that, no matter how big the parking is.
Okay.
Yeah, there, it is, I, when I started thinking about it, I was like, well, there's only a couple of things you can do. You can limit side of the house, but then, you know, you still may not have changed the parking situation. You still may get just many cars, but a smaller house. You can have more and more and more parking, which is, is just so many undesirables with that, especially if you're trying to move towards transit and you're trying to do all these other things and improve your bike, ped system.
I'll stay where you're going.
You know, I mean, it's, yeah, so...
I think the maximum's a good idea.
Yeah. I mean, that, that's just kinda where, wh- what the thinking is now. And we'll flesh it out more by the time we come back next month and have some more answers. And, you know, if it sounds like something we should pursue, then that's what we'll do. If not, you know, we'll go back to drawing boards.
Wha- what kinda, what other communities? You said you compared this to other...
Yeah, I did look at, um...
Orlando, Miami, here?
I looked at, uh, Mi- Miami, I looked at some of the other communities that have a lot of short-term rentals. And even neighborhoods like in, uh, desirable cities are having problems with this, um, with the VRBO and the, what do you call it, the?
Airbnb.
Airbnb. That people are just going into regular neighborhoods, and they've established maxes in certain neighborhoods. Portland, for instance, I looked at different metro areas that have some of the same problems, and that's what they're doing. And, you know, to be honest with you, parking and planning in the state of practice, a lot of communities are just total, and this may sound really Bolshevik, they're just eliminating minimum parking requirements. I know. Mind-blowing. Um, yeah, so, um, you know, some urban, or especially urban cores and places that are trying to be walkable and have transit and whatever, they're just, and, and small, encourage small businesses that may have more bike, ped traffic, and we have that, honestly, in South Wall. We have that situation. And parking is not a great use of land, and it's not a great community creator.
Well, I think what you have in South Wall is you have everybody wanting to drive to get here. And once they get here, they don't wanna drive anymore.
And that's great.
They'll take bikes, but you still gotta play with those cars.
That's right, that's, but that's great.
A lot of cars moving around down there.
Yeah, there are.
But do you really want, you know, to load up a bunch of parking requirement when you're trying to have a mixed-use, walkable environment like that, that where really parking and cars are undesirable? I mean, and so, just if it makes you feel better, a lot of places that have that same situation, they're just totally eliminating minimum parking. You know, and we've been talking about more and more and more parking, but...
But you know what? That forces developers to come up with creative ideas too.
Well, you know, and it, if there's no place to park, you don't drive.
But then, I think that gets back to us having to address the parking in the right of way.
It does. They're gonna cram it in there, yeah.
Just to throw out there, that, that also brings up the issue of public transportation, different transit systems, which you won't have any desperately needs, I know this is not the forum for that. But the, some of the issues that you have relate, and y'all already talked about it, people parking somewhere else, getting to the site, walk around and have their vacation, get back to their car and go home. And we have to, uh, that's another way, those places that are doing one with parking requirements, they have multi-modal systems.
Yeah, right, yeah, and, and more parking means more cars.
Because they already have that when you work in that area. Yes, if the workers cannot walk in that area, they are actually transported from another parking area that's, that they have to be kind of...
Right. Okay.
Yeah, big, really big picture thinking.
Is there, is, in looking towards that in the future, is, is there anything for large developments or to put in, uh, give them like a buyback or something, if they put a, if they designate an area for a mass transit stop?
Well, we recently had one on, um, the development that everybody didn't like so much, Cypress Lake. They put in a really nice, uh...
That's one of the things I really liked about that one, was they had that.
Yeah, so, um, it's definitely incentivized in here, um, yeah. Um, and it's, it's something we should be looking at absolutely, because that's probably the solution for, you know, long-term first thirty-eight. I mean, we're not gonna change the character of the road.
There's only so many cars you can put on.
Moving along.
Yeah. Okay. So, that's the big, that's the big one there. Uh, I didn't really make too much other parking changes, honestly. Um, I looked at these with ITE parking generation, and they're not too bad, uh, what's in here. In multifamily, that's been an issue for us, um, if it has three or more bedrooms. But when I looked in the ITE parking generation manual, which is based on empirical studies, you don't get more than two. So, I didn't feel like I had the justification to go higher, uh, but we can talk about that. Uh, there is one thing, uh, going back to the cheat sheet, uh, number seven, this is a big one. If you look, um, back in where we talked about the methodology for term, determining density, our code and comp plan for some reason required, uh, if a family member wants to give a piece of land to another family member called family homestead in agricultural areas, that the family member actually live on the parent tract, that it be homesteaded. The statute, uh, one sixty-three, three-one-seven-nine does not have that stipulation. So, we did change this to be consistent with that stipulation or with that statute. Because, I mean, I, I mean, technically, if the statute allows it, um, you know, we could, we could further limit it down, but, you know, but that's, you know, it just seems like it's been a point of contention for people that have land that they wanna give to a kid, or, uh, you know, and they get caught up in that homestead requirement. So, that changes in here.
Good change.
Amen, yeah.
Okay, other big things I wanna talk about are, um, starting on, and this is pretty much it, we're doing great. I know this is... Right-of-way preservation.
Page...
Page sixty-eight. One change that is made here is the addition of, um, four, the Roman numeral four, um, in the exceptions section that talks about if you have an existing design or cross-section. Um, we don't really have a lot of this now, but we may, and if you, if you do have that, you wanna use that as your established right-of-way width, not these general widths that are changed here, if you look and see in the table. The widths are increased to be more industry standard for what type of right-of-way you would need for those facilities. But we also need to make a change, we need to consider the functional classification, the, the map. You may not want every road in the county to be subject to right-of-way or corridor preservation. That's actually not typical. It may be certain key facilities that we want to say have these requirements, or it may be every road, I don't know. But, um, that is something to consider, as well as, um, this, how you def, where you measure that setback from. And I included half-distance in here because we wanna be clear that on one side, you have half that right-of-way, and on the other side, you have half that right-of-way. So, you don't have the whole thing on your side. Um, but the highlighted area here needs work. I struck, I mean, I, I don't, the intent here is to, if you have an existing right-of-way that's smaller than these general widths that are described here, that you be set back from that typical or that greater right-of-way. So, we want, we wanna make sure that that says that, cause there's been a lot of interpretation confusion on this. And I'm still gonna be working on that a little bit. If anybody has anything you wanna say about that, then now is the time. Yeah, we're getting, I'm gonna have, we're gonna think, well... Let's talk about it, yeah, we'll talk about it. I think that's, this has been a hard thing to implement, so we can, we can really work on this language. So, this, we're gonna be talking about that a little bit when we come back next month. But just know that these widths are greatly increased in this draft, and that's probably, you know, to, to be more in line with what you would actually need. The other major change that is in here is the single-family stormwater language. Remember, we, we brought that to you, um, a while back, uh, Jason Rita made a presentation, and this language that's in here has been through numerous reviews, public works reviews, outside engineer reviews, surveyors have reviewed it. Um, so, it's pretty well hammered out, and it's in here, and it does, um, allow for de minimis. So, not everybody's gonna have to do a single-family, if you're making a small change or you have a big lot. It also takes some of the onus off the single-family builders, and you guys probably know this as well as I do, but for a single-family builder to be doing stormwater is outside of the norm. So, that has been an implementation challenge just because of that. Um, it's not normal to have an engineer do a site plan with stormwater on a single-family home. You know, so that's just been, has been challenging in generals. But we're trying to make it where we provide you a technical manual where you can do these simple designs and get through that permitting process a lot faster than what we currently have, and with a lot less expense. While still realizing we wanna have the single-family stormwater for areas that don't have stormwater plans. The other side of that is this language includes a lot about maintenance and providing us an ASBIL survey. So, cause what's, what's actually happening is we're not keeping these things on the site. The homeowner doesn't know they have it, they don't know what it, what it's, why they have that swale in their backyard, and they come in and they do whatever. Um, so, there would be a communique with us and the homeowner that they signed that talks about the maintenance preservation of the system, so they know they have it, and that also we have an ASBIL on file, so if there's code enforcement issue in, in the future, we would be able to restore that stormwater system.
They didn't know it until the house sells.
Yeah. Oh, it's been fun.
I do have a question.
How long did they take, uh, to get filed with the B? The stormwater, the maintenance, the maintenance agreement?
Yeah, yeah.
So, I, I'm Curtis Smith, and I'm a civil engineer. I've, I've probably done about fifty to a hundred of these designs in the past year. And I don't necessarily agree with a lot of it. I stand to lose a lot if we get rid of these, and I'm totally okay with it, because I do think we go overboard. One thing that I'm a little bit worried about on the new stuff, when this came out, was the ASBIL requirement. We had the discussion earlier about the time and the expense. Surveyors are so backed up right now that it takes me nearly four weeks to get a survey done. So, to add one more layer on to this process is going to, not only costs a five to a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar survey, it's gonna take another month on every single project. So, I like to be careful about that, or at least think through it, if that's what we need to do. We also have engineer certification at the end, it's already required. So, when I do these certifications, I walk out and look and kinda judge. I've been doing it long enough, I can see if it's built basically per plan. If I design a one-foot-deep pond, and it's a two-inch-deep pond, I'll tell them it's not deep enough. Um, but an ASBIL survey really is to get down to the T, so we can analyze it, rerun all the math on it, make sure it's done properly. That's really the purpose of, of an ASBIL survey, so...
But every, every person that does your job may not be as concerned about it as you are. How do we hold them accountable if they get that, get to the end and it's not right?
So, I, I really do think it falls back on the certifying engineers. Now, I know that's a tough one as well, because sometimes we get certified engineers who don't give it the standard of care that it needs. However, we have a seal and a license that lies on that, so if you find someone not giving it the care and attention it needs, you can absolutely go to the FVP and put a, uh, put something on their license for doing that. So, we have ways to go about that right now to not have to add one more burden on the, on homeowners. Now, if we can do this, I, I definitely agree with adding BMTs that we can pick from, and the maintenance is a big deal, to have that recorded. Now, how we did that in Nashville and a few other places was during the development of the documents, we created an exhibit, and then it's usually like a one or two pager of a maintenance that is standard in the county. Those two things get put together and taken to registered deeds, you pay the two or three-dollar recording fee, and it's always there, it shows up on a title search, it's a pretty easy thing to do.
So, that's the concern I have, as long as it can be...
We don't have to record the ASBIL, we can record the design document that has that information on it. The ASBIL can, you can either add that extra step or just reme, keep it on the engineer to certify it's there in general conformance of what was designed. So...
If it's not gonna be an engineer, is the thing.
Yeah, a lot of single-family houses, there won't be.
It's a different thing, if you take those here out.
And a lot of times we get those letters, and it's like, you know, the house hasn't even been built, but we got the letter certified, and the stormwater plan was done. But we, the, the, the concept here really is to allow for them not to have to get, uh, a geotech and an engineer and add that fifteen thousand onto the cost of the house. But to be able to do, the builder be able to do the stormwater plan, basically using our manual.
You're providing documents to them.
We're basically providing the design, if you will, it's kind of a easier way to do it in the technical manual. So, then, the only requirement they would have would be that they did build it, you know, according to those specifications that they showed us on their original plan, cause there won't be an engineer.
I'm glad we got a month to think about this.
How is it you're supposed to make sure this thing stays? And I know we talked about the fact that people can go in and change it, like, somebody else buys it and they see a swell. I mean.
It's code enforcement, really, and, and.
Yeah, but who's gonna turn them in? Who's in their backyard?
No, people turn them in, but um, not everybody will, cause not everybody knows.
Driven, though.
It is, and, and probably it's gonna be a case if there's a water problem, if water's going on to a neighbor's property, they're probably gonna call and say, why is this happening to me? But in all, other cases, that's really it. And, and a lot of times what's happening is they'll go out and construct different than what was on the stormwater plan. And the engineer may say, well, that's okay, but it's way outside of what we permitted. And then what do we have for code enforcement? Because we don't really have a document showing what it, how do you return it to what he said was okay?
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's been, it's been very complicated.
There is mud.
Very, very fun. Enjoyed it. Okay, we're almost done. Chapter two. Um, you've already seen this before, really, and.
So we're done with five.
We're done with five, and you can think about that for a month and bring it, we'll, we'll talk about it again, and we'll have a clean draft for you.
What's the date of that meeting, Mac? You know?
Next meeting, uh, February twelve.
When? Yeah. I think I may be uptown.
Yeah.
Oh, don't leave me here with this by myself. Okay. Uh, chapter two, you, you, you have seen this before, but I'm bringing it back. Um, we're adding those conditional use items that I mentioned that we've discovered in chapter five. Um, just back to this being an iterative process. So if you're okay with us adding those conditional uses, and you've already seen two, I think we can move forward. Cause what we want to do ultimately is when we get ready to adopt, we want to have the comp plan and the code sections running together at the adoption hearings. So like, we'll have environmental and coastal management elements, the comp plan with chapter four of the code. They'll be together and adopted at the same time. So land use will go with future land use element. Um, this is the zoning implementation.
I'm good with that.
Just changing any existing densities and.
No. No, uh, but recall that it does allow land use categories north Walton that are not currently allowed. It removes location criteria from the comprehensive plan. That's a huge change.
Was that your comment, Melissa? No? Go ahead.
Or two hundred and fifty words or less, according to Matt. Um, Melissa Ward for Delampin Chipman, and I'm actually here on behalf of Waterside Investments. What we are proposing, the zoning categories, uh, we're very pleased with the land use, uh, changes, or the changes to chapter two. One I'm going to hand out real quick, and I'm gonna try to do this really quick, cause we have been here a little bit. Um, is a letter from, uh, from us. I don't know how many there are. And I'm, uh, to save on time, I'm gonna try to go through it pretty quick, so you guys won't have to sit there and try to read it. So, um, the land, Walton County has a lot of beautiful areas. And, um, the area that is of interest to us is our parks and recreation at the moment. The, um, the new language in the, or certainly not new language, but the language that's proposed for the zoning districts under parks and recreation is on page seventy-four of a hundred and forty-three, at least on my copy, so I'm not sure. Uh, it's, um, uh, zoning two point zero, two point three oh, parks and recreation. And we don't object to the language. What we'd like to do is, um, add something to it. Specifically, um, we are a county of lots of water and, uh, and a lot of tourism. But the, um, code does not give us a good deal of guidance on some of our access to it and water-related activities. We would like to be able to, um, and I'm gonna hand out a picture, which I've ha- I've handed out before. This is a conceptual plan of the park that I started working on in two thousand and twelve. And we have been unable to get this, um, off the ground, as it were, because the language in the code has one limiting aspect when it comes to parking rec- parks and recreation. Specifically, we would like to be able to have, um, uh, open-air barn-style boat storage on the onsite so that people can leave their boat and trailer at the park and call when they need it put in the water. That's what it's for. That's what the design is for. The park would be dedicated to the public. There would be a, um, public, uh, there would be restroom facilities and inf-. I'm not here to sell the park. I'm here to tell you what we need. The park would have public facilities, and the, um, the boat storage would, the money from the boat storage would be utilized in mostly, mostly in part to maintenance of the park. This is something that this developer feels very strongly about. What is there now? The land use category is conservation residential. Underneath that land use category is a recorded plat that allows somewhere around forty units, thirty-five, forty units. And, um, it's not, it's not an area that should be a residential subdivision, because it's right on the bay at Hogtown Bayou. It needs to be a park. So what we're asking for in particular is some defining language in that s- in that section two point oh-two, point three oh, where it says residential density under subsection E be allowed to be changed to read except for an accessory living unit for a twenty-four-hour park maintenance. Because we would like to have somebody who stays there twenty-four hours a day, make sure it's clean, make sure there are no drug dealers in the area. That's what we're trying to establish, uh, an ability to have a twenty-four-hour maintenance man on the site. In addition to that, we would like to be able to change, and either, we have two options, and I've talked numerous times with Kristen, and at this point, whatever is acceptable to the county is acceptable to us. We would either like to be able to change it so that the ancillary commercial use could be approved as a conditional use, uh, so long as it is functionally related to the park facility, i.e. you have a park with a boat ramp, you can have boat storage. This does not mean you can have an RV park. It does not mean that you can turn it into a retail store for bathing suits. It means it's functionally related and ancillary to the use of the park. Alternatively, we could, um, look at doing it as a special development standard or a special exception, allowing us to go before the Board of Adjustments and being, presenting it to them to look for them for the direction, and it would be a major development order. Um, so what, the reason that it came to this place right now is because our code and plan before any of these changes does not really give us room to do commercial activity on a park. So when you have a park anywhere where you are not able to provide concessions specifically by a private entity, then it creates a situation where that park is closed off for use. We're trying to open it up for that, and we understand it's personal gain. We want to put a park in that's dedicated to county, but we want to run that boat storage facility.
So you're talking about a public park that is privately owned?
It would be dedicated to the public, either by deed or by easement, either one, whatever the county preferred. And let me say too that these, oh, go ahead.
Well, yeah, I, I guess. So you do it. The county says, okay, we can allow these things. And. Five years down the road, whoever owns those rights sells them.
Deed restrictions per- in perpetuity.
But I guess what would concern me would be the upkeep and the maintenance of those facilities.
And the, well, I suppose on a site-by-site basis, it would be up to the, the, um, developer in the county to come to an agreement. Our developer is planning on maintaining those facilities. With the exceptions of roadways.
I think, I, 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 I am one who used to live very close to the bay on Black Creek. And Walton County has woefully too few boat storage places close to the water.
That is true. Here today, in order to get, say, a twenty-foot boat in the water, you cannot, you can store it at your house, or you can store it in Okaloosa County or Bay County.
Right.
You, um, to, you can put a boat in the water in a couple of places, south, uh, on the south side, but very few. There's a lot of boat ramps on the north side. Um.
But as far as places to park that boat or keep that boat?
Well, that's what, that's the problem, is that because of the density down here, there's just not a place to keep your boat.
I'm not disagreeing with what you're wanting to do. I just, what concerns me is making sure that it's maintained.
Absolutely.
Would it be fair that, that y'all are gonna, that you're working the commercial part of it in order to pay for the?
The funds.
The funds would be.
The funds from the boat storage would be utilized in maintaining the bathrooms, keeping the grounds clean, um, landscaping as needed, but most of it's gonna be, um, you know, natural vegetation, keeping everything clean and in working order.
And it's fair to say this isn't economically viable without that, correct?
I'm sorry, say it again?
It's fair to say this project wouldn't be economically viable without some mechanism to pay for it?
Well, he, if he is unable to do the commercial business in conjunction with the park, he would look to either give the county or sell the county the park or sell it to somebody else, because he's not gonna build a park with no financial gain. That is accurate.
Yes.
Now, I would go on to say that there are a lot of developers that I have met with that would do, um, more park facilities in those kind of relationships, but the county's not been in that position. And, and that's not negative on the county's part. It's that, well, for one thing, as an example, one of the parks that's down here on the south end costs fifty-two thousand dollars a year to maintain it, and it's, it's basic maintenance. So imagine what a park that nice is gonna require to maintain it. Well, what it's gonna take is having somebody on the grounds twenty-four-seven keeping maintenance, and they're paid by the developer.
You have a lot of other parks, state parks, federal parks you have, live on.
DEP allows you to have concessions. I actually have a concession agreement that I, was sent to me by DEP. It's forty-seven pages long about the arrangement between.
We don't wanna copy it.
I don't, I didn't make one for you. It's about the relationship between DEP and the, and the, um, developer or the concession. Um, we currently have, uh, all of you are, I'm sure, well-aware that we currently have, um, beach activities agreements with vendors to go down there for cheer. It's a minimal, uh, agreement, but the agreement has to do with how they upkeep and clean and maintain their areas and do all those things. So that is, if that's something that the county wanted to memorialize, absolutely we would do that. But the only way to do that is to have a land use category that allows it. And the current land use category doesn't allow us to do anything but put houses on those lots, and that's not what he wants to do. We can change it to parks and recreation anytime we want to. I'm sure the county wouldn't mind, but then we can't do anything with it. And the county doesn't have the funds to do anything with it.
Mac, is this something y'all would be amenable, are these changes something y'all would be amenable to?
This is a project that's been discussed for probably three years.
At least.
Uh, the present, uh, comp plan and land development code just doesn't fit, or this project doesn't fit with our present rules.
Mac, does it make sense to do what she's talking about as far as the changes she's requesting to allow something like this to be done?
Uh, certainly the state is moving that direction with state parks, uh, to provide more concessions. Um, at present, the county really doesn't have this kind of program. Um, but certainly, uh, as we move forward, uh, to do things like adding ice machines that are, that are contracted, um, it might be good to have some latitude.
I think it's a great idea.
To be able to accommodate these kinds of things.
Can we hold this section out? Or can we add this later with it?
I.
So y'all have ti- time to keep it working and everything?
Yeah, I think what she's talking about makes a heck of a lot of sense, and with some small changes, I think, could be done. Because this is what we need in all counties.
There's gotta be a way to, to have this kind of stuff without the taxpayers getting soaked, so.
Can I just add one thing here? Being in some groups, you're gonna do something like that, and you're saying maintenance and upkeep. There's a boat owners really think in, they think in the morning, they think if, if you're in charge of their boat staying there, you're in charge of everything. You really need to look at winterizing, upkeep, maintenance, we think maintenance, really clear that up as to what you are gonna be responsible for. They're gonna be responsible immediately.
Yeah.
So when you have stories, it becomes a whole different thing when it comes to, to those.
When you said maintenance, I thought you said they, you, they were charging a rental fee, and then they were using the maintenance. That fee was being to maintain the whole park, is that correct?
The proposal is for, uh, the maintenance of the park. Boat storage does not include any maintenance on the boats, does not include, uh, and when I say maintenance, we are not, um, going to be doing, uh, engine repairs, any of that kind of stuff that would be considered light industrial use or anything like that, or, or that type of, uh, toxic issues. Um, and as far as maintenance, I think, and I'm, I'm not sure what exactly, but sometimes, uh, when somebody takes a boat out of the water, they, they have, um, the policy is to hose them down, and you give them just a once-over and then put them back in their spot. Um, that's something that would have to be on a, um, you know, that's something that they would ha- I don't know the details, but I don't even vote. So, sorry, sadly to say, so I would have to find out from them what that meant. But the maintenance was about the park, not so much.
Well, let me ask something then, cause I'm missing something here. Why would somebody go in and build all this stuff and develop it and only make enough money to maintain it after that?
And they're gonna make a lot more now on that boat storage.
Well, boat storage.
That's not what she was saying then.
Well, no, what I said was that the money from the boat storage we use to maintain the park.
I thought you said it'd only be enough just to maintain the park.
Uh, but, and let me add to that.
Say, I don't know who this guy is, cause he's a big gift to the county.
I mean, he's kind of really good, but I don't think he's trying to give it for free.
Yeah, okay.
The ideally, that the park itself would fund taking care of that plus, um, and, uh, and he has a lot of good ideas in the design and historic nature of that particular site. And I would be glad to share with y'all anything about that later. But ideally, that would be enough for him to do that, to pay the guy who has to live on the property, take care of the story. I mean, there's more to it than just fifty thousand dollars a park upkeep. We're also talking about a person who's gonna live there and take care of everything, the maintenance of his own facilities. And then really what is, this does is it puts him in a position to, should he be able to in the future, build a, a building that can, somewhere else that's zoned for boat storage, like a light industrial or industrial land use category. He could then say, I'm full, but I can put you down here, whatever.
Well, hold on before you say what you want to say. Is this something you're asking for us inside, Mac?
Me?
Yeah.
I'm asking for the land use, not the development order, not anything else, the land use language to be looked at for approval. But I don't, if it's something that has to come back, I don't, I don't know.
Well, we need to decide, the, the, just talk about zoning for a minute. It would need to, it needs to either be a conditional use or a special exception, and that's the big thing to decide. And I'll tell you, the main difference is gonna be, do you want the Board of Adjustments to decide whether these things are approved on an individual case basis with less criteria? Or do you want staff to approve these things, and if that's the case, we're gonna load up the criteria? So that's, that's.
The special exception goes to the zoning board?
Yes. Didn't I call him the BOA?
Yeah.
That's from, that's from another county. Okay. Yeah, yeah. So, and, and those are more open, and it's a case-by-case decision, you know, you know, or could even, you could even say most of the time they go to the, the adjustment board. But if we do it by conditional use, they're gonna get a faster approval, but there's gonna be a lot of conditions. Like, you know, we're not gonna be wanting to have airboats and stuff.
Well, see, I agree with you.
You gotta decide if it's, it's good for the whole county, not just this parcel.
I would rather do it where it comes through you, through the plan.
There needs to be a variety of criteria. I agree wholeheartedly. Even one of those funds does.
That's what I would like to see.
That would, that would be the direction we would need.
Can y'all look at this and come back?
We'll go down the conditional use road and establish criteria.
So we can come back to this. We don't have, we can pull it out of this section.
Yeah, but that helps me to know that you're.
Yeah, I prefer that y'all do that instead of going someplace else.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, is that we're gonna take action on this then, or what?
I, I would like for you to, if you could, uh, if you feel comfortable with this, say that we're okay with chapter two, with the exception of this addition coming back as a conditional use. I mean, do you want, do you need, do you want it come back to you, or can it go straight to the board?
I'm okay with it going straight to the board. I mean, I, I, I think it needs to be done, and I don't think it needs to be, I don't think that needs to hold up.
The rest of it.
The rest of it.
Yeah, that would be awesome if we could just say, yeah, we.
I think that, I think that y'all work together enough to, 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 to know what needed to be done, and I, I think that's the way to do it.
Yeah, but before we do that, I just need to announce on the record that John Roberts is gonna accuse himself, cause he has a conflict.
Okay.
To be clear, I'm involved in litigation with the owner and developer, and I'm on the outside. It seems unfair for you.
Okay.
Okay.
You're saying you couldn't vote?
No.
You're saying you couldn't vote?
I should not vote.
Or you could not vote?
Nah, he's an attorney. He uses all those words.
Dr. Seuss.
Anybody else have, what are y'all, your thoughts on that?
I think it's a great idea.
I do too. I think it's fabulous.
Okay, good.
Um, are you ready for a motion, Kristen?
Yes.
I make a motion. We approve chapter two with the, uh, uh, with that particular section line out here to come back or to go forward.
As a conditional use.
As a conditional use, yeah.
A motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Let me back up one more time. Make sure there's no more public comments. So, now we'll close that. All of you ever say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, I know you're tired, but you have to do this because this is a grant, and we're gonna get fined five hundred bucks a day if we don't have this meeting right now. So, we're gonna talk about three thirty-one.
Can we take ten?
Yes.
And come back?
As long as you come back.
How, how long is this gonna take, you think?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes for sixty-four minutes?
It actually is really exciting, though. You may like it. It's kind of a cool project.
So, we may get excited and talk longer, so.
Let's take ten and come back.
Maybe only.
Hey, if I'm brief us on what all this is.
Yeah, this looks good, though.
It does. Remember last time we talked about three thirty-one corridor?
Yeah.
All right, y'all ready?
Can you have a little map? This project, um, it, it's a grant project that, um, is funded by the Department of Economic Opportunity, and the Regional Planning Council actually wrote the scope. We're very, very, very tight timeframe. So, um, a lot of big ideas and in a short timeframe. We're gonna have two public meetings coming up. One's tomorrow night, one's on the twenty-fourth, I believe. There is a project website for anybody out there listening on the TV. Um, I have it here. It's www.waltonthree thirty-one dot com. We've been trying desperately to get the.
What was that, what was that again?
Word out.
Waltonthree thirty-one dot com.
Waltonthree thirty-one.
Yeah, Waltonthree thirty-one corridor, sorry, dot com. And you, there's an email sign-up and project documents and all that there, just like we've done with the Comp Plan, um, update. So, the, 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 the scope work for this project, it, it had three main tenants. One was economic development. You know, how do we create an economic development plan for the corridor in anticipation? We know that the sewer's probably coming. We know that the road's already been widened, and we know that South Lawn's built out. So, there's lots of, lots of pushes, and it, it's really, uh, to get ahead and create a plan for that coming development in a proactive stance rather than a reactive stance. So, it's economic development, land use, and also corridor preservation. So, we need to keep the road moving at a high speed and with the carrying capacity that it has, because it's a main tourism thoroughfare into the county. It's also our main hurricane evacuation route. And, you know, we need to control access points and traffic lights and those things because that road is so vital. And it's also a sta- uh, state inter SIS facility, whatever that stands for, but it's an important state road. So, the recommendations that are in here now, and this is fast, but really, let me back up one here. If you look at your map here, um, we're talking about the creation of, it's actually two activity centers when we look at the map. The map that you have, that's the tax increment finance area that's been established for the three thirty-one corridor. And that was done back in twenty sixteen, I believe, uh, with the express intent of funding sewer. But there may be other funding sources for sewer now, so, um, but the TIF is still there and can be used to, um, put infrastructure in those areas. And everybody understands what a ta- ta- tax increment finance district is. Okay. So, that's the study area, and that was decided by the, uh, the work group that's been working on this when we met, uh, a couple of weeks ago. That is, the, the TIF that was adopted in the ordinance is a little bit different 'cause it has some agland and, and conservation lands in there, but we've removed those, and that's what you have left uh, in that TIF, is kind of that area south of Dufuniac, which we're gonna call One Activity Center, and then the area closest to the bay, which we're gonna call Another Activity Center. And within these activity centers, the county would say in this plan, by policy, that we're supportive of land use changes. 'Cause right now, what you have out there is predominantly rural village or very low-density residential, very little commercial, uh, opportunity. So, um, in those activities, these centers, we would, we would say that that's where we're by policy supportive of land use changes. Yeah, we would also, hopefully, um, one of the recommendations going forward here is that we would say by policy that we would be able to use this tax increment finance district to provide urban amenities or other infrastructure amenities that are necessary as a catalyst for economic development.
What would those be as an example?
Um, recreation facilities. You could even, you could even have, you know, if there's potential for charter school or anything like that that would come, you know, as a, a community incentive. Um, and we'll be talking about that a little bit more as we move forward in the project. So, if we don't use that money for sewer, you know, it would be targeted. It has to be used for infrastructure. I mean, we would target it back to the district as a, as a program of luring development, basically, or being, um, and there's some strategies in here about what type of development that would be. Uh, okay.
Things like service roads, maybe?
Service roads, that's, um, the other, I'm sorry, uh, recommendation that's in here is talking about increasing the, the interconnection requirements, the, um, having a strong service road if you can do that, and there's a section in the plan that talks about that. So, all of those things, um, would be included here under the capacity preservation heading, uh, or speed preservation. Then, um, did I? A big part of the plan also is, uh, fast track permitting for these target areas. And I've been kinda calling it DO and two. So, in these target areas, the projects would not go through the board process. They'd be staff-approved if we were to establish a fast track permitting process. And that's really the only way we can do that. We can't do fast track permitting and go to three-night meetings. Um, it's just not possible with the advertising requirement. So, and there's also, we're hearing about, there may be some state-level breaks on the Comp Plan Amendment Process that we can avail ourselves of. So, we'll be researching that and seeing if we can get that sped up a little bit too. Um, and I'm not sure about those yet. Um, getting mixed information about it.
Kristen, are there any other areas in Walton County where that's done now?
No.
Is there anything similar to it? What, what'd we do up in Mosshead, Matt, I mean?
Uh, the Mosshead Industrial Park is the only other area where we have that.
I said that, I knew there was, I knew that they did it there, so.
In the park, doesn't go to the boards.
Yeah.
In Mosshead, the county owns the development.
Right.
Uh, and within those covenants and restrictions, it's prescribes a, an expedited review process. It's only related to that particular development. What we're talking about is coming up with something similar, uh, for this.
On, on larger scale.
Where the county would not own the land, but we would be able to fast-track development, uh, that was appropriate for that particular corridor.
That's the blue area on the map?
Yes, there's two, there's a northern activity center really, and then there's a southern. And there's kind of two weird pieces in the middle that are, um, stuck out there, but, um, they can be included. And I'm, and I actually would recommend, and I've sent a map to Matrix, um, that we include a larger area on the southern um, that takes in a lot of vacant land that's there. And the board may wanna consider amending the TIF to incorporate that. So, it's a more, um, development-based map and also removing agland and the conservation areas from the TIF that's in the ordinance.
Is the city of Freeport included in the TIF?
No.
No.
The city of Freeport has a fast track, um, while they're.
So, we, we would be kinda matching, it sounds like, what they are doing, um, there. So, that, that's a, that's kind of on the incentive side or the economic development side. And then we would publish that, and we would use the EDA website, and we would create sort of a, a data center that's specific to three thirty-one corridor. So, if I wanna do a project here, I know exactly where to go. I know exactly what my permitting process. I know what the, um, statistics are for that area in terms of demographics and everything specific to three thirty-one. So, we would do a lot of data proliferation and publishing, uh, associated with that. And, um, the final thing, I know I'm going super fast, um, we are gonna, we, we, we have been talking about recommending aesthetic guidelines from Owl's Head South, and so that would be for that southern area. Not, the northern area's a different character. They've got different, there's people up there that have billboards and things that they wanna keep, and we don't want, you know, that's, may not be, that may be too much. And I'm not talking about scenic corridor over the top. I'm just talking about, um, some signage, billboards, and just making sure that that area maintains a certain character as you're coming into South Walton. And, you know, because of the Owl's Head anchor and that bay anchor that's down there to make sure that we don't, um, it, it, for planners, those types of things are economic development. I know the economic development people don't necessarily see it that way, but we do, so we would like to consider that, uh, as well. So, that's really it. That's kind of in a nutshell where that product's going. If you have any ideas or, um, anything sounds like a terrible idea, uh, let us know, 'cause we are hammering it out.
You're talking about as- aesthetic stuff. What are you talking about?
Probably, um.
Are you gonna restrict the types of buildings that can be built?
No, no building, no building, uh, I don't think any building guidelines, but things like outside storage. We already have a section of the code that deals with outside storage that's pretty strong. Um, but signage, of course, billboards. If it's not grandfathered, that would be something I would look at. I really would, um, because, you know, think about eighty-five going into Crestview.
I understand. I just wanna, I just wanna understand completely what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Because when we came up with this three thirty-one corridor thing before, it was kind of a nightmare.
I heard, and, and we got that T-shirt. I know that was also at the same time that DOT was taking right of way. So, that's kinda like, you know, and it also wasn't presented in terms of the total incentive package like this, where we're talking about land use changes and fast track permitting. So, we're gonna put it all together and see if that's more palatable, and obviously, if we get bogged down, we get bogged down. We can't go forward, but, um.
I think, I don't think the businesses that exist there are not, are gonna be real happy with it limited in their outside storage and more that's already limited, or the signage. I mean, when you got people zooming by at sixty miles an hour.
Yeah, and well, they would be grand, the existing businesses would be grandfathered, so that, that may help some with that. Um, but there are a few. There are a few. There's not a whole lot coming down here yet, um, but there's a fair few.
No, but those that are there can be pretty loud.
Yeah, well, and we, we've been sending them letters.
I mean, and I, I just wanna make sure that, I mean,
Yeah.
I think we have to be careful with that, and I mean, I understand the need for it, but.
I, I think that the goal should be to, uh, develop the economy, and aesthetics are, are down the list as far as people's livelihood and, and making, making, uh, creating the jobs that this, this potentially could be. But outdoors, uh, we don't wanna get to the place where we are on ninety-eight where you can't have a car lot. I mean, because that would be like a, a nice area to put one.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think we're advocating that. Um, and, and the things you're talking about are economic growth, and there's also, the plan talks a little bit about it in the preamble, and we can talk about that a little bit too, is there's, there is a difference between economic development and economic growth. Um, both are necessary, but one is going to be the better jobs that is desirable for the community, and we live in a world, and I think the Planning Council's gonna be talking about this a little bit in the strategic plan, where people are mobile and they have a choice about where to locate a business that is a high-paying job business, and they're looking for something different than, you know, we have to be competitive there. So, just, I'll throw that out there, just think about the differences between the growth and the economic development. Growth is things that are kinda ancillary to me, like you have rooftops, you have commercial, you have, you know, your retail and your service industry things, and those are great, and they're necessary. But are they, you know, real economic development?
Uh, and some of these, some of these areas in the blue don't lend themselves to the retail stuff, but they do lend themselves to the, the tech, you know, the, why I would consider to be growth industries. And the proximity to the agland would be something.
Exactly, and that's why I'm, I'm just urging you to think about, you know, how that develops and how it looks, um, because those people have a choice about where they wanna be, and, um, they make decisions in a different way. Um, so, uh, and I think Planning Councils, but they've been talking a lot about that. It's been in our economic development plans. If you read the regional plans, they talk a lot about that, you know, sort of being the new way we think about economic development. Um, so, but, and I, and I think we gotta take in, probably consider taking in a bigger area down south for the activity center just because you're gonna need that ancillary residential development. You will not get commercial without the residential. The residential will occur first. And, um, we've gotta open that up a little bit more to get that residential to make that corridor viable if you're just, you know, if you're just talking strictly about economic growth. It's actually real planning. When we put our infrastructure behind our economic development plans, it's pretty cool.
Okay.
So, that's it.
This is a no-action item.
Yes, and, you know, just looking for direction input, anything that, you know, if you wanna take action on something, you certainly can, or something you totally hate and you want me to stop, then you can.
Well, it is a great idea. I think that you went down the right road.
Yeah, it's, it's fun. I think it's gonna be fun.
Just gotta make sure that, that we protect those that are already there.
Absolutely.
All right. Nothing else on the agenda, so we will stand adjourned.
Thank you. Thank y'all for coming. Thank y'all for coming.
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank y'all for coming.